Pull on the neighborhood floor, does it? We're gonna start off with city monthly reports, three minutes each Honolulu Fire Department.
I don't understand any word.
Oh, you can.
How was it?
The hot city.
Sorry.
Not people, first time in person in the world.
No, welcome back.
Um, hi everybody, my name is Captain Bosova, based at Fire Station. For the month of April, there's four structural fires, one brush fire, eight nuisance fires, one cooking fire, nine activated alarms, two hundred twenty-six medicals, uh, one auto, two auto accidents, six, oh sorry, two collision accidents, six motor vehicle accidents, one ocean rescue and two asthma falls. Uh, fire tip for the month is wildland awareness, prevention and preparedness. Wildlands are fires are significant threat to Hawaii. Our wildlife, uh, and communities with dry conditions and everyday activities. Contributing to increase risk, it's capable of a proactive role. To prevent and reduce wildfires. So, we suggest lighten the load by reducing the fuels and possibility of ignition of the nasty. In your yard, clean your gutters. Clear, cool and contain, prevent vegetation and feed around campfires and barbecue. The shovel and water nearby, put out the coals, make sure the coal people walk away. Uh, watch the spark, ensure machinery, chainsaw, new reactors, recreational vehicles are operating spark arresters and are maintained. You can learn more about, um, these tips online at, uh, fire dot home.
Thank you so much. Um, any questions from the board?
Angela, thank you Chair. Aloha, board member Angela Melody Young. Uh, and, um, so I represent CARES, the grassroots movement, and we advocate at the state and city, uh, the legislative parameters, um, related to safety and health, so I was wondering, um, because we walk with our neighborhood security walk. Uh, so I'm very interested in the fire department initiatives, um, because when an emergency response is dispatched, sometimes fire, HPD, and ambulance paramedic are dispatched altogether.
Yep.
So, does ocean safety, did you mention ocean safety as well in your report just now?
Well, ocean rescue, this is, we respond to ocean incidents as well.
Ocean is as well.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, um.
Angela, sorry. Can you answer the question?
The question is then, um, because I'm not too sure of all structures and functions of the safety response teams. Um, how then does the ocean safety get dispatched?
Ocean safety is only going to be on the shoreline or in the shoreline waters, yeah. So if the medical incident happened on the beach, then they could respond.
Oh.
Close to the beach, yeah, park them out of the, of the beach, yeah. That's not what you take it would, and a medical incident or that's kind of their jurisdiction.
Thank you so much for that, Jane.
Yeah.
Um, any other questions from the board? Any questions online? Not from the community? Thank you so much for all that you do. Thank you for being here, that's very mean. Thank you for your hard work. Okay, we're moving along to Honolulu Police Department District One.
Good evening, Chair, good evening everyone. Lieutenant Segusia representing the District One area of responsibility. Uh, hope everyone had a great, um, Mother's Day weekend. Uh, let me get right into the stats for this past month of April. So motor vehicle thefts were two, from the previous month it was four. Burglaries were one, previous to that was two. Uh, thefts were one for both months. Uh, UMVs or car break-ins were four, uh, slightly up from one from the previous month. Assaults were zero, previous month was one. Sex assault was zero, uh, previous month was one. Graffiti cases were zero for both months, and drug offenses were one, uh, previous to that was also one. So total cost per service for your particular area was two hundred and thirty-seven compared to the previous month of two hundred and thirty-one. So, uh, there are no criminal breaches, uh, to report at this time in regards to the District One side. Uh, I just wanted to mention that we did have a barricade situation that happened on, uh, April eighth. Uh, Kukui Gardens, uh, it resulted from a abuse type case. Uh, it met all the protocols for a barricade situation, so we notified SSD and they came out. Uh, you know, out of an abundance of precaution, we just called them. Uh, the negotiation team was also notifying and they came out also and we were successfully speaking with the suspect and having him surrender to our custody peacefully. Uh, just wanted to talk about the safety tip for the month, it's these ongoing scams for, uh, by phone, uh, spoof's. Uh, especially, especially unnerving due to the fact that they're utilizing law enforcement as their hook, as we call it. So they utilize spoofing apps to mask the location and the origin of the phone numbers. Sometimes they look very legitimate in regards to saying city and county of Honolulu or state of Hawaii. Uh, and it's usually in regards to outstanding warrants or people missing jury duty. Um, four things that we need to look out for, uh, our community members need to look out for is law enforcement would never call uh, in regards to outstanding warrant, we would just rather go to your location and arrest you. Uh, two, uh, they ask for monetary, uh, payment through gift cards, money transfer, Venmo, payment apps. Uh, the dollar amount, third thing is the dollar amount is usually four thousand or less. And, um, in some of the cases that I've kind of read into, uh, it's recent, recently retired people, so, um, we do, I, I, it's kind of, uh, unusual. I guess they feel that these people are the best, um, targets for them, right? Um, if you do fall prey though, uh, to these scams, uh, I know it's embarrassing, but please, please still report it to authorities. Uh, we'll de- we'll definitely help off others, uh, not becoming victims to these criminals. At this time, I'm gonna give back the rest of my time and take any questions from the board and the public attendees for the area of Leleha, east of that and Two River Street.
Thank you so much. Any questions from the board?
Angela. Thank you, Chair. Aloha Lieutenant Angela Melody Young on behalf of CARES. Um, and I'm just wondering, um, so we had, uh, legislated, um, a resolution at the state, uh, with Senator Wukai. He published it in the March, um, bulletin, and I don't know if you saw it. Um, but it was to request, um, support for neighborhood security walk, and I'm wondering because, um, if the Honolulu Police Department is short-staffed, um, and currently has three hundred vacant positions, training volunteers for responders to lead neighborhood security walk and citizens patrol is more feasible and practical than, um, focusing efforts on hiring officers. Um, so I'm wondering if this, um, neighborhood security walk resolution is something that you think is helpful to alleviate the burden, um, from the pressure upon, um, Honolulu Police Department?
That's a very good question. So these neighborhood security walks, we were in total support of it. Uh, the Honolulu Police Department believes that we should do partnerships with our community in regards to fighting crime. Uh, we, for us in District One, we still, um, participate in, um, citizen patrol walks, uh, in, in certain particular areas if they're organized. Uh, however, you're, you're correct, uh, we are very short-staffed. However, um, if, if those people that are doing these walks, uh, desire police presence, if they could just contact our CPT office or a community policing op, policing team office, and we can, um, probably schedule an officer to come and meet with you people and walk with you folks.
Thank you so much Lieutenant.
Absolutely.
Any questions, Evelyn?
So I have a question, not to him, but to, I guess, our board. If we're board members, are we able to ask a question on behalf of another entity like what she just did? When the question was posed as a board member, if board members have a question and she posed a question as a CARES.
Right.
Yeah, that's a good point. Cause if you're, if you're, I think if you're wearing your boardman, board member hat, you have to limit it to that, I think.
Right.
If, if you're asking on behalf of a CARES member, you're not here representing CARES, you're here representing.
That is correct, Evelyn.
That'd be my thing.
We can, um, research that and ask the expert, right? And see who's correct.
Basically, if, if she's asking whose, um, questions from the board.
Right.
So if you're representing another entity, you should not, uh, you should wait for the, when, um, community, when she asks.
Well, technically, I'm not representing CARES, I'm just saying that I'm from CARES, the grassroots movement, so we legislate statutory parameters,
So that's, so you.
And then on this public platform, we are at the city, state, and federal platform, which involves concerns and discussions about legislating statutory parameters at the legislative level. And therefore, because my question is about a legislative issue.
Yeah, at this point Angela, this is being disrupted. At this point, I am the chair. You are being disruptive. We're gonna move on, we have to be respectful to HPD, we have, they have things to get done. I don't wanna raise my voice.
I apologize, I was answering, I was stopped. I was stopped.
I never raise my voice.
Sure.
Thank you so much for not being disruptive.
I was just answering.
Any questions from the community or anybody online? Thank you so much. I'm so sorry, officer. Thank you for all that you do. We'll see you next time.
No problem, thank you.
Honolulu Police Department District Five.
Hi, good evening. My name is Lieutenant Creighton Hattico, I'm one of the nighttime commanders here at the Kalii Station. Uh, let me provide you with the stats for last month. Uh, for burglaries, there were five reported, down one from six in March. Uh, there were seventeen motor vehicle thefts, uh, which is the same as in March. There were fifty-seven general theft cases also reported, which is up from forty-eight in March. Uh, thefts from vehicles, there were seventeen, as opposed to seven in March. Robberies were down significantly to two from eight in March. There were nine aggravated assaults, uh, which is up from five in March. Uh, there was, uh, three sex assaults reported, which is down from five in March. And there were twenty-one simple assaults reported, which is up significantly from seven in March. Um, I, I know all of you know, last month was pretty eventful for the District Five. Um, we had some pretty major cases, including a murder. Um, I just wanna assure the community that it's not something random. Um, it appears to be related to gang violence and, uh, we're trying to get a, we're trying to get a clampdown on that along with, um, with officers, uh, increasing patrols and increasing visibility, and also having, uh, we also had a bunch of help from Adult Friends for Youth, uh, going in and speaking to the people involved directly, and, and that was a really great help. Um, so we're monitoring it at, at this time, but, um, I want you guys to know that we're taking, that's something we take very seriously. And, um, the, the community's, uh, safety is paramount to this, um, department. Uh, total cost per service, uh, down a bit, two thousand nine hundred and four for the month of April, down from two thousand nine hundred and fifty-two from March. Again, yeah, we have, we have nine, nine different beats, uh, for your guys, particular area. So it's a really busy area, and we have a lot of, of causing as well. Um, Lieutenant Segusia already gave, already gave you guys some really great tips, and he kind of touched on, um, and covered what, what I was thinking of covering, so I'll leave this open to questions and concerns from the board and from the public.
Thank you so much Lieutenant. Any questions from the board?
Angela. Thank you, Chair. Aloha Lieutenant, I was just wondering about the Adult Friends for Youth, I met them at Magic Island during the charity walk with Hawaii Tourism Lodging Authority, um, they were cleaning up the stage with their adult supervisors. And so weed and seed, which is a strategy similar to neighborhood security walk, works with youths at Palama Settlement to play basketball, um, to plant a healthy activity in the community while weeding out bad activity, right? And then training with the police to, um, activate walks and, um, to train up, um, in emergency response. So, I'm not too sure about organizing, um, in the safety, um, initiative level. So I was just wondering about your advice, um, is it something of a good idea to organize with like Adult Friends for Youth? And like weed and seed and neighborhood security walk to like do a healthy after-school activity to train up kids in safety?
You guys can contact them directly and also our, our community policing team will also have a number of contacts that you can use. But I feel like everyone working together is, is the solution to this, is the best way to do it. Um, if everybody tries to do it on their own, it's helpful, but, um, it's, it's missing some of the synergy that we want. We want the community to feel involved, we want all these groups to feel involved because they're all very important. So, um, a lot of them, they're really very open to communication. So I would suggest, uh, a first step would be to con- contact our community policing teams, and they can get you in touch with the correct people.
Thank you. Yes, it's so, um, good when everyone is so cooperative.
Yes, I agree as well.
Evelyn? Okay, so my question isn't to him, but it's more towards Angela, so what was the point in your question? You want the neighborhood board to be participants? I didn't understand what your question was, cause you mentioned a whole lot of things that.
I can email you after.
No, I need to know, because my brain needs to know your answer.
I mean, yeah, Chair's discretion, I don't wanna get into an argument, that's fine.
Evelyn had a good point. I mean, what were you, what was your objective with mentioning all of that as a member of this board?
Um, just as something of an idea, that if there were helpful organizational activities to do, in terms of, for example, you had a resolution to support a high school safety initiative.
So how does that affect this community and this board? What is the relevance to it?
So, the relevance of creating safety awareness with students, with Adult Friends for Youth, um, and also weed and seed.
So are you saying that we as a board should take initiative and be active with it because we do have a safety committee?
Well, I don't have a proposal ready, so if that's something that you're willing to do.
That's something that maybe you should be working with Evelyn with if you wanna speak on that.
Okay, sure.
She is part of that committee. So there's no confusion moving forward with that, okay? So we're gonna move forward. Thank you so much Lieutenant. Any questions from the community online? Nothing. Thank you both to the lieutenants for all of your hard work and dedication to this community. It has been rather gnarly out there, so to speak, and violent, so please keep and be safe. Thank you both so much for all that you do.
Thank you ma'am, you guys have a good night.
Thank you so much.
Happy Police Week.
Happy Police Week.
Police Week.
Yeah. Okay, Board of Water Supply. Okay, Laura, so we're gonna move forward with Honolulu Authority for Rapid Transit. Hart, Harry?
Hello, uh, sorry about that, um. Can y'all see me?
Yes.
Alrighty, uh, good evening everyone, Harry Show with the Honolulu Authority for Rapid Transportation. Um, I just have two announcements to share. Uh, first is that Hart recently received, um, the last and final train on island uh, about two weeks ago, which completes the, uh, twenty trains that will be needed for when full service opens into downtown. Uh, the train was transported to the operations center and undergo posting, uh, to prepare for service. Um, and next, Hart also recently received, uh, one hundred twenty-five million dollars in federal funding from the, uh, Federal Transit Administration. Um, and this is, um, a portion of the initial federal funds that was owed to Hart. Um, and the reason this is a major milestone is because it's the first federal funding that we've received since twenty seventeen, about seven years ago, uh, which shows the confidence that the, uh, FTA now has in our leadership team, uh, to successfully complete the project. So we're very excited about that. And, um, I guess one announcement, uh, related to, um, our work in Kalii, um, on Dillingham Boulevard, or actually on Koho Street between Dillingham and Kamau Lee, there's been a, uh, twenty-four seven road closure uh, that's been ongoing for, um, almost a year now. Um, that closure is going to be extended through the end of this year, uh, so just wanted to make that announcement again, um. It's Koho Street between Dillingham and Kamau Lee, which is, which has been closed for about a year, and that's being extended through, uh, the end of this year for micro tunneling work. Apart from that, there's nothing new on, uh, Dillingham, um, the reutility work is still progressing and on schedule to be completed in twenty twenty-six. And, uh, that completes my report, but I can take any questions.
Any questions, thank you so much. Any questions from the board? Angela?
Thank you, Chair. I think this is appropriate to ask because he's from the Hart office.
What's your question?
My question is just, um, that, um, can community members, uh, go to support, um, the director, um, during this time at the public meetings, um, since there's been a lot of pressure and scrutiny? Since we are a collaborative, uh, community, I was just wondering, what are the rules about that to support each other?
Sure, uh, so our, um, the Hart Board of Director meetings are public meetings, just like the Neighborhood Board meetings. Um, they do allow public testimony, uh, the next meeting I think is held this Friday. Um, and it's in the Hart office at, uh, um, Elite Place, which is at, uh, ten ninety-nine Okeechre Street. Um, it's on the first floor in Suite one fifty. Um, again, it's a public meeting, so anyone is welcome. The agendas are all posted on our website, just like this meeting, it's, again, it's a public meeting, so there's an agenda. Um, at the beginning of the meeting, the board does allow for public testimony, so anyone is allowed to, um, to, uh, join the meeting and show support for a director as well. Thank you for that Angela.
Any other question, Evelyn? Hey Harry, I got a question, Evelyn, call in here. You mentioned that it's gonna be a micro tunneling area in Koho, uh, on, off of Dillingham, so will that be electrical lines? Will that be considered a major hub, uh, for the electrical lines and will that also be a HECO easement?
Um, so the micro tunneling is to install, my understanding is to install an electrical line under the canal. Um, so I, I'm not sure if an easement is needed, I think it's in public right away.
Okay, so with rain that we've been having lately, and electrical now is moving towards underground, is there some sort of abatement to address that if flooding does occur in that area, do you know? Just asking.
Um, are you, so your question is how, if rain would affect underground utilities?
Yeah.
Um, I, I don't know off the top of my head, um, I would need to check with our engineering group and, uh, get back to you. I, I, I don't know the answer to that off the top of my head.
Thank you. Chair, I have a question. Go ahead. Um, hi Harry, board member Templo here. Thank you for that crucial information on the extended road closure. What is being done to inform other neighbors of this?
Um, so we have, you know, public notifications that go out. Um, I think there's a message board, I'm not sure if, oh, actually the message board's gone, um, but we do, uh, we do public outreach, so we notify all of the, um, the properties around the closure, um, and, and that's how they're notified.
Are you guys doing it like canvassing or you guys are like sending out mail?
Uh, we do both, so we, uh, visit, um, the, the area businesses, um, and in person at times, not all the time, but, um, for certain events we do, and, uh, other times we will send, uh, email notifications.
Okay, thank you, thank you Chair.
Yeah, so we're, we're in constant communication with all of the, um, properties in that area and along Dillingham, so we have pretty much everyone on an email distribution list that we can reach at any time, so.
Okay, I got something quick, Evelyn, call in again. I would, um, like to have a message board so everyone that uses that route would also be informed. That's it.
Sorry, what was that?
Uh, the message board to inform people who use that route to also be informed, that's it, thanks.
Okay, um, actually I think the message board was installed, uh, before it happened, but I think now that the closure is in place, I think it's been removed.
Um, any questions from the community or online? Hearing none, I think that's it. Thank you so much Harry, thank you for all that you do.
Thank you, thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
We're gonna move along, thank you. We're gonna move it along to board business, game. Also speaking, one minute and one question per speaker, additional questions be posted in the chat or email to presenters. Um, this has, was created, and this is a suggestion for this board, as we've had numerous or some people that take up the whole three minutes on every single agenda item, and we wanna get to the business of it. This is not to stop anybody from communicating, it's to streamline the meeting. So that's what this is about. Any discussion? Any motion?
Motion.
Any second?
Second.
And now we can discuss it. I mean, I, I think, you know, the only thing I have to say, I mean, I, I like this only because I wanna go home and, and spend time with my family, but at the same time, I, I hate to be limited to one minute, when I think a lot of us have some poignant questions. It's just there are certain members that do take the three minutes on nearly everything. And so, it's a, it's a shame that the board has to suffer as a whole, um, but I do, I would like to spend time with my family. So I, I mean, I guess I would support it, but I just hate to see it, I guess.
Angela?
Um, so, I agree that there should be a orderly game to organize things. Um, and I think thirty seconds is good. I don't even think that it has to be one minute, right? As long as the time limit is applied fairly and not arbitrarily.
I disagree, I think, uh, Lisa Minerva should be with the vice, cause some, uh, members do have some, uh, quality questions that do benefit the board of the community.
I'd like to add to that, it does give you a minute, however, it does not stop you from communicating with the representatives in the chat or on the email. So, I do support this one minute, I do support, and again, I do echo what Eric has mentioned too, it is a shame, however, here we are. So I do support this. Any more discussion on it?
What, what if we do a minute thirty? Compromise, I agree.
Okay. That's a, that's a good, I guess we'll, that's a good compromise.
Can we have to move for that, or do we have to?
Minute thirty, sure.
Can we move like minute thirty?
Yes.
Love that. So who wants to move for minute thirty?
I move for minute thirty.
Second.
Oh, lovely, okay, let's just hear it.
Minute thirty?
Minute thirty.
Okay, minute thirty. Now we're gonna take a vote.
Sorry, just to clarify, that's just, that's after you say your name, right?
Yes, yes, yeah, after you say your name, yeah, then your minute thirty starts.
And are we sure that what we're doing is not in violation of the Hawaii Vice Statutes Sunshine Law?
We can pull it up.
Okay.
You are.
No, it's on the agenda.
Okay.
So we're gonna have a vote? We're gonna come down to this?
Either one of you?
Okay, is, um, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Reservations?
Reservations?
Reservations.
Two reservations. Any notes? I think it passes, right? Majority counted, okay, it passes, thanks. Moving on to be removal of board member, we're gonna have Lloyd speak about this.
I got, I got one minute thirty seconds. By, by the way, I like your name. Sorry, um, yeah, I saw this on the agenda and asked the chair if I could speak to it because I think it's important to have it, um, understood. And, and basically, um, the rule, the rule in the plans is very specific, and it says, the presiding officer of the board, or a majority of the board, may expel an individual whose conduct at the board meeting is disruptive, disorderly, contentious, or improper for the conduct of business at the board meeting. What I think we should understand is that it has to happen at that meeting. It is not for something that happened two months ago. Just understand, and the whole idea is that you as a board and the chair have a right to an orderly meeting, and if you have someone that is not in compliance with what you guys feel is an orderly meeting, you have the right to remove them, and it doesn't matter if it's a member of the public or a board member. It is your meeting, yeah, so I just want you to, I don't want to be, uh, clear on it, but it should happen during, uh, that meeting. You can, you, so you're gonna say, you know, you need to leave, it's, it's not working, um, you are disruptive, whatever it is. But it is, the chair can do that, or the board can do that. Just letting, letting you know. The other thing I would ask you to, uh, and I realize that the boards, all of the boards have challenges at times with keeping up with their time. You know, and I think that, what I found out, what I understand, and what I like to do is, if I'm in a setting like this, I would ask everybody, ask your question first. Cause a lot of times, the explanation is longer than the question. And I think if, if you ask the question first and then there is a question from the person you're asking. And I think if if you ask the question first and then there is a question from the person you're asking, then you can explain a little bit. But I think most of the time, the questions you ask, the history, everybody kinda knows.
Right.
Yeah, um the other thing I would ask you to do is to respect the fact that everybody has an opportunity to speak. There are many times that you can take your issue, especially if it's more on focus on your area only or your personal issue, and you can ask those people directly outside of the meeting. You can ask the police, you know, they, and you can ask Hart, you can ask any anyone, um directly, yeah.
Yes.
Uh I would hope that the meeting would be focused on what all of you think is important for the community. And I think at that point, get to the question first, if if more explanation is needed, then you can explain. Um the second thing is also, if there are times, it's probably better if you talk directly with those people, whoever you have a question with. Because a lot of times what happens, as you know, you have a question, but you really wanna get down here to this point and it takes a while. Yeah, but you gotta establish that communication, you gotta talk, so go talk to them. You have tremendous access, you know, you're a board member, you have access to the police, um you have access to fire, you have access to to all of departments, you can ask, so.
Yes.
Um I would, I would try and make this a meeting of um collegiality of of respecting the fact that, you know, other people may have questions, other people may have ideas, but you know, get to your point, get to the question, get it answered, because I look at your agenda, like most boards, it's pretty heavy, right? And you got a lot of pictures. I realized I went beyond my minute thirty.
No, no.
But you did, I I thank you, I'm gonna, yeah, I like this board, I'm fine, yeah. So anyway, I am happy to answer any questions, um now if you have, but you know, I've been wondering if you was gonna ask me that.
Angela, point of personal privilege, because I know that this agenda item is about me. So if we can just clarify the issues that uh the board uh has against me publicly because it's a public platform, and just so everyone on this public platform knows, I am not the one causing this drama, um and I'm just responding to it. So if you want to tell me what I have done to offend the board, please do.
Can I ask a question to you?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
And also, actually, so I didn't get to my minute uh thirty, so if I can use my minute, is someone timing you?
Any other question?
Okay. Hold on. Just like give me a minute, just like when we fixed that up, I remembered the time, okay, continue.
Okay. So um as far as I know, I have had good relationships with almost every individual board member here. Um I helped Donald when he was struggling about being moved as vice chair and then it turned out after some research and calling the state office, that that was not a violation and that uh you replaced him and it was within the ethics of the law. So he was just um somewhere else during that time. And so uh we worked together in the office at the state legislature, that office um helped with uh legislating uh statutory provisions. Actually, I'm not too uh familiar with Lloyd, but he's always been very nice to me. And then Evelyn, I introduce you to the grandmas who walk the deputy policing team.
Oh, fine.
Time.
Um so, yeah, I'm just not sure what it is that I have done to offend the board.
We're gonna move it along, we're already finished our questions, any other questions?
Yeah, I have a question, I can stay within the session, yeah, so it's kind of, sorry, three part, I know we just, but it's one, the standard is at the board's discretion, it's just majority, doesn't need to be on the agenda. And then three, when you say removal, just to clarify, removal from that meeting, not from the board.
Yeah, it it's only from the meeting, okay, the only people that can remove you from the board is the commission.
Okay, alright, I just wanted to clarify, thank you, I'm sorry.
Yeah, thank you first, I'm fine.
Any other questions?
So, point of personal privilege, you are not answering.
I, wait, sorry, I'm not.
We already.
Yeah, I thought the rule was minute and thirty for each uh speaker, it's a question, you know, so.
But my concern is not addressed, right?
But it's past your minute thirty.
It's already passed, we already had your minute and you can take this up with um director.
Sure.
On the set. Okay.
Cause we do need to get to the rest of the agenda.
I have a good question.
Oh, sure, it's just a point.
Uh then then the um put your question first and then speak, would you have any other recommendations for speakers uh for that one, one minute thirty seconds? Just to be more efficient.
Talk fast, I don't know. No, I I.
That's fair.
Good question, because I think there's a tendency at times for people wanting to explain why they even asking that question, and I think you have to resist that because um it's more important to get to the question. And I think it's because from my perspective, once you get to the question, at least you can have an answer and a discussion, yeah. Uh what happens a lot of times is, the reason for asking the question becomes the argument.
Yes.
And all of a sudden, you're all over here.
Yes.
Arguing about why you asked, why did, you know, it's like, no, 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 what is the question?
At the end of the day, you know what, go online and watch other videos of what other boards do and how it functions and how it flows.
Yeah.
Right. Go visit, go in person, go click the link, watch what other boards do. So I've done that many times over, I think we have all, okay, I think we're good.
I have a question, as a member, are we able to give our time to other members to add on? Cause at the state, that's what legislatures, legislators do.
If we're gonna do that, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, we're.
Yeah, I.
It's purpose.
Can I just jump in?
Yeah.
The board can make that decision.
Right.
I would not ask you to do that, because all of a sudden, it be, you will get into a situation where you gave the minute, or you gave your time, you get how much is the time, did you give all your time, you know, I mean, it gets confusing.
Yes.
And the whole point is that if you can't say what you need to say in a minute thirty, at a minute, try for your breath, well, minute thirty, that's a problem. So anyway, yeah, you can, but I would not worry about that.
Can I get a clarification again, cause I'm old, so um we can let that per, a person for that meeting leave, but only the commission or can expel.
Yes, you 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 can remove the person from the meeting, but only the commission can remove them as a board member.
So the person can come back to the next meeting?
Yes. Yeah.
Is this just for that?
Just for that, yeah.
And hopefully, hopefully, it will be resolved to where the issue is okay, you know.
Okay, resolved.
Yeah. The hardest thing is, like we all know, is to get involved.
Yes.
Right.
Well, that's true. Sorry, one more question.
Yes.
So what is the procedure of removing uh a board member if they do violate?
Somebody just make, somebody just makes a motion. Or.
Anyone can make a motion.
Anybody can, yeah, because it is at that moment, yeah. But anybody can make a motion or the chair can just say, you know, excuse me, but you're out of line, you are disruptive. They're gonna ask you to leave.
I think you can follow up with a written request as well, right?
You mean request?
To submit it to request to the commission for removal.
To for.
Removal.
From the, as a board member?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh yeah, you can, you can, you can request anything from the commission, I don't know if they would entertain everything that.
Tough to them to, yeah, inside of it.
But yeah, but you, but we have, yeah, but you can request, sure. You can also file a complaint, you know, and that's normal, the normal process.
Okay, ready, I think we're gonna get to the rest, cause we do have these other meetings.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
So you know, and I I apologize, my intent from the very beginning was to meet every board and and I get, I got to like five and that was. It is, the time is just not, not enough. Hey, by the way, can I just say one thing real quick?
Oh, sorry, yes.
Yeah, sorry, my, I didn't use my executive privileges now, um I said you weren't timing me. Um but I, but I realized the last time everyone was here, there was an incident. And I just want you to know that um my belief is, I'm so glad you guys are here, I'm so glad you guys are here. I look at that incident, as you know, it's almost like a bully, right? And 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 I, and I'm so glad you guys are here, cause you need, everybody needs to stand up to it. And the whole point of you being here is, you know what, your community needs you. They need you guys to leave, they need you guys to to listen to the police reports and the fire and everything else, yeah. You know, I I just wanted to say, I really appreciate you guys being here, you know, it's really, really import, it's important for your community. Thank you.
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next C, we have absence letters, three absence letters, members for Delia, Lina and Eric Earl.
So.
And they had a discussion, no.
Used their last time.
Do you mean a motion?
No, I don't know.
If we give it.
Yeah, forget it.
I apologize.
No, fine, we got kids.
You don't need to, it's an issue.
There's no motion to remove them, yeah.
No.
No.
Remove forward.
We're moving forward.
They're here.
Chair, maybe say something?
Oh.
Oh, hey girl.
I'm not telling you.
Oh, miss me.
Aloha Chair and members of the board, um I I just want to apologize for those missed absences which were working illness related. They are rarities and I know this is really important that we all show up to do the work for our community, so I just wanna mahalo all of you and and apologize for those missed absences within the last year.
Thank you so much. We're gonna move on, thank you so much for that. D, approval of minutes, Wednesday, February twenty first, twenty twenty four, and Wednesday, March twenty eighth, twenty twenty four, is motion? Motion, second, second, pass. Any corrections? Nope, pass. Okay, presentations, limited to maximum of ten minutes per presentation, uh reimagining public safety, Carrie Anne Chiruta, A C L U.
Aloha Kako, I just wanna, did we have the privilege of being able to PowerPoint presentation?
Yes, we did, yes.
So Liam. Can you see this, Liam?
Can you see that?
Yes.
It's fine, it's good.
And so I'm not very familiar, but I'm seeing a lot of static. Okay, perfect. So Aloha Kako, board, Chair and board members, my name is Carrie Anne Chiruta. Okay, sorry about that. I'm the policy director of the A C. Just um speak forward, I think when you, when you go backwards, it doesn't catch you. Let me try that again.
Perfect.
Okay. So I'm Carrie Anne Chiruta, I'm the policy director for the A C L U of Hawaii. We are a nonpartisan, non-profit organization dedicated to protecting the civil rights and liberties inclined in our state federal constitution. Here with me this evening is Liam Chin, he is a public safety consultant, he also has background in distorted justice. Coalition in Hawaii. And tonight, we're here to present, thank you for the invitation, to talk about reimagining public safety in Hawaii. And the purpose for that is that we realize that many of us are feeling like there are major challenges that our community is facing and we wanna present not only data, but also solutions to some of these pressing challenges within our community to achieve real safety and wellness, so with that, we'll get, dive in right into this presentation. Next slide, yeah. Are you able to advance the slide?
Yep, I advanced the slide.
Okay. So I'm sure if we went around the room and took a poll and asked people, well, why does it feel, what's your perception about safety in our community? Some of us may feel like drugs, houselessness, crime. The number of people in terms of conditions on our streets is worse than before and that's why we're here, not only to talk about the data, but also about proven solutions, please. And why is it?
Are you able to, I just wanna make sure you can see that slide.
I can see it, if you can please advance.
Yep.
And the reason why we have this perception of what's going on in our community, next slide, Liam, is because we are facing a public health and housing crisis. Liam, are you able to advance the next slide?
Yeah, I'm on it, I don't know why it's not. Is that? Are you, what's?
That's perfect, no, that's fine.
Okay.
Okay, so what are some of the main causes of the current crisis and we apologize for the technical difficulties here. There is a severe shortage of mental health services and facilities in our community. I see that in the agenda tonight, we're gonna talk about a behavioral crisis center. But there's been a a dearth of these types of facilities, there's a severe shortage of affordable housing. This happened, has been happening for many years, it has been exacerbated by the fires on Maui. Many of our people are leaving Hawaii because they can no longer afford to live here and Maui is where I originally was born and raised and grew up. There's also a lack of treatment facilities for drug addiction. As many of you know, sometimes people are placed on waitlist to get into drug treatment programs. And on the neighbor islands, sometimes people have to fly an island away to get the treatment that they need. And while we have waitlist for drug treatment, we have no way to get into our jails and prisons. We also have high costs of living. Everyday prices going to the grocery store, medication keeps rising and our living wages are not keeping up with it, the minimum wage just doesn't help us cut it. And between twenty eighteen and twenty twenty three, poverty levels have been increasing rapidly. Next slide, please. If you look at some of the data points, again, Kalihii, Palama, throughout Hawaii, we're a diverse community, but we wanna highlight looking at native Hawaiians and Pacific Islanders, in twenty nineteen, the median household income was less than sixty seven thousand. And this is data from Aloha United Way, that the minimum income needed for essentially basic needs in Hawaii of four is a hundred and four thousand, so you can see that there's a big gap between what is needed to survive and live and eat and what people are earning, sometimes working one, two, multiple jobs, just to make ends meet. Next slide, please. And just to, again, behind these statistics is real people. Real people who are really suffering, being challenged, wanting to get the services and help and just struggling, and so Donna is a resident in Honolulu, who shared her story with one of our staff members, taking care of her husband who has Alzheimer's and just struggling to make ends meet. For twenty one years, they lived in a home, rented, but they could no longer afford to make rent if they were falling behind because of the cost of medication for her husband. And this family has been homeless, out on the streets. And I think Donna's situation is not isolated, we know of many people who have, now don't have a place to live in our honor streets, and so they're more likely to face these kinds of challenges, and so what are some of the solutions? Next slide, please Liam. And we just also wanna point out that there is a vicious cycle and an interconnectedness between incarceration and houselessness. Approximately forty percent of all the people leaving our jails from Kauai to Maui to Oahu and Hawaii Island, people are leaving jail exiting to houselessness and it's a vicious cycle. The other end is that ins- incarceration can lead to to houselessness and vice versa, right? People who are off in houses are more likely to be swept up into the criminal legal system and enter our jails and prisons. People who have criminal records are more likely to face barriers to getting jobs, housing and other life opportunities, even if they've served their time, paid their debts to society because of that past criminal record. And so with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Liam, he's gonna highlight a few more data points and then we're gonna shift into solutions and reimagining public safety.
Great, thank you, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great, so I wanna just kind of switch gears here, just to follow what Carrie Anne said, forty percent of all people in jail in Hawaii right now are homeless, so um you know, that leads into this point that many police in communities agree that police are asked to do too much and that the real community needs are going unmet. We're asking police to respond to everything from calls related to homelessness, mental illness, drug addiction, things that actually require public health professionals who are trained specifically in those areas that would free police up to deal with serious crime. So in most communities, a matter of the call, we're currently sending police to these problems, but a badge and a gun don't and can't resolve many of these needs and too often can make things worse, let me explain that in a minute. Um also, you should know, there's a monumental mismatch between community problems and how the government's responding to them. This mismatch, for example, sending police to calls related to mental health is disproportionately harming specific communities, including houseless, mentally ill, native Hawaiian and micro-nesian here in Hawaii. Um people with disabilities are the most at risk during crisis, people with mental health dis- Um, people with disabilities are the most at risk during crisis. People with mental health disabilities are sixteen times more likely to be killed in interactions with police. Sixteen times more likely than the average person. Um, fifty percent of victims of police use of force are living with a disability. Nine one one is the only option for people looking for mental health crisis intervention. And police often arrive at the scene armed with deadly weapons and lacking mental health training with devastating results. Um, I should also mention that because HPD is spending so much time addressing all these social problems, their clearance rate is extremely low. Clearance rate is a, um, another way of saying, you know, was, was an arrest made, um, you know, uh, in, in this case, or has it been, or has the case been cleared by other matter, by other means? In twenty nineteen, HPD only cleared seven percent of all crimes. That was one of the lowest of all police forces in the country. To give you an example, last year and this year, only about ninety five percent of, um, burglaries went unsolved. Seventy five percent of robberies unsolved, about ninety percent of car thefts unsolved. So, you know, we, we need um, to have our police force narrowly focused on violent and serious crime while sending public health responders to meet the needs of, um, people with mental illness, houseless and, and so forth. Um, so you should also know four percent nationwide in major cities, you may not know this because you watch TV and movies, which makes it seem like police spend all their crime, time fighting violent crime but in, and serious crime, but in fact, only four percent of all nine one one calls involve violent crime. Vast majority of police time is spent on non-criminal calls and traffic enforcement. Okay, what does it mean to reimagine public safety? First, you invest in the root causes of crime and poverty. Second, nine one one deploys appropriate, um, health professionals to respond to people experiencing mental health crisis and their substance addiction. Um, and third, you ensure everybody that needs services and treatment gets it. And fourth, police focus strictly on serious and violent crime. Let me just say, when we talk about investing in the root causes of crime and poverty, um, it's pretty simple. People with living wage jobs aren't typically.
Sorry, we're gonna need to wrap it up. We're almost out of time.
Okay, um, given the technical difficulties for the first few minutes, do you mind granting us a couple of minutes?
Two minutes extra.
Okay. Um, so investing in the root causes of crime and poverty is critical. This is like, um, ensuring we have living wage jobs, stable housing, good education. These are things that are proven to reduce crime, um, more than incarceration and, and arresting people. Um, and, and the other, I, I've mentioned, um, these other responses. Um, so here's a proven approach. I just mentioned jobs, healthcare, education, after-school programs, restorative and transformative justice, violence interruption programs. Data has proven, these aren't just fun and programs because they're new. These are proven over and over to, uh, when, when communities have these factors present, um, crime is significantly lower. Um, I wanna just quickly tell you about a coalition we have here in Hawaii called Reimagining Public Safety. We're currently working on reducing the scale of armed policing and advancing alternate responses like sending mental health workers out to calls that don't, that are nonviolent and, um, don't require a gun and a badge. Driving investment in the root causes of crime, poverty and violence. Decriminalizing poverty and public health issues. Decriminalizing youth and driving investment into youth development and wellbeing and establishing civilian oversight with police. Okay, so what could Hawaii look like if we succeed? Twenty-four hour mobile crisis responder service operating on all islands. Arrest rate for unhoused drops by fifty percent. Drug treatment and detox centers on every island. Everybody who needs treatment gets it. Efficient short and long-term mental health facilities in all islands. Most traffic enforcement is done by unarmed DOT staff freeing up HPD with significant time. All jobs are living wage and restorative justice hubs are established and serving communities across the state. That's what it would look like. So we really appreciate you letting us present today. Um, here's our contact information if you'd like to talk more about reimagining public safety in Hawaii and what that'll look like. We look forward to partnering with HPD and other community and, uh, providers to really remake our public safety system in a way that makes more sense. We're sending the right people to the right calls and we're investing in the root causes of poverty, crime and violence. Thank you so much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you so much. Any question from the board?
Have a question.
Sure.
Hi, thank you so much, uh, Carrie and Liam for presenting tonight. How can our board get involved with reimagining public safety in Hawaii Coalition?
Um, if you could email us, we'd be happy to, um, set up a conversation with you and, uh, see if you, what you, we're, we're running, we're currently, um, you know, meeting off and on and folks are talking about joint projects that they might wanna work on. We're a diverse coalition that has everything from healthcare providers to, um, you know, criminal justice reform experts. So if you could re-mail to that, on, to that address that's, um, I think of, that's up there in the screen, um, would love to talk with you further and then kinda give you some um, of the events and meetings that we, that, what we hold and see if you'd like to attend. We'd love to, we'd love to, um, partner with you.
Excellent. In the, in the respect for everybody's time, um, please do come back again. A C L U always will always have a time and place at this table. I will be in correspondence with you. I do look for a follow-up. You have wonderful things to say. So I will be in correspondence for you to return to this board if you'll have us to come back to this board.
Absolutely. Anytime. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. We're gonna move it along and we can contact you folks and I will be in contact.
Okay.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Take care, everybody.
Thank you, aloha. And we're gonna move along to AT&amp;T. Close installation of the twelve, um, antennas and associated equipment on fifteen forty-five Marina Police Street, Erika Reyes. Is she not there? Okay, we're gonna move to C. We can always go back to that. We're gonna move to C, Amazon Updates, Steven Maduli Williams.
I don't see.
Then D, Department of Transportation, HDOT, Transit Oriented Development, Blaine Calmura.
It's been a little bit longer.
Oh, wow. K E Kohale is Kalihii's director of.
Something wrong with that.
Hi.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, hello.
Yay.
Hi. Hey, thanks for having me on. I just wanted to, um, thank the Chair and the Board members. Just wanted to report to you that we're gonna be opening up a Kahale in Kalihii. It's gonna be at Cedar Church. It's off of Count Fourth Road, right behind the, uh, Jack in the Box. We're gonna put up about fifteen to seventeen units. This will be for our homeless that are either kupuna, over sixty, sixty-five years old and those that may be coming out of the ER, medical respite patients, uh, medically discharged. So just to let you know, um, again, this will be our first kup, our first kupuna Kahale focused just for our homeless that are seniors. And it's also, we're also adding our medical respite patients, those that, like I said, um, are medically frail. And, uh, at this point, I have reported to the, there were sixteen and, um, we, we were fine. We didn't, we had a couple of questions, but, um, I'm here to answer any questions. If any of you had saw, seen the news today, we, there was an uptick, a twelve percent uptick in homelessness in the state of, I'm sorry, on Oahu, only on Oahu. And so the question that the media had for Mayor Blangiardi, Governor Green, both myself and Sam Moku, the city homeless coordinator, uh, was simple. It's what have you done in the four months since this point in time count was taken? Um, just to let all the board members know, I was just hired. I got into my position on January sixteenth of this year, about a month ago. And I was fortunate enough to participate in the point in time count, which was on January twenty-third of this year, uh, less than four months ago. And I just want to report to the board, as we reported to the media, that in the, the four months since I've been on board, we have opened up six Kahale. And, uh, also your kind of diligence, as I read them off, so I make sure I don't miss any. Oneward Kahale. Middle Street Kahale. Wilson Street Kahale in Kalihii. Waikiki Vista, this is a big one. We've got a hundred twenty beds for this Kahale, Waikiki Vista. Hawaii Public Housing Authority, we had eight units dedicated for fifteen beds. Kahale. An Evil A Resource Center. This is a joint effort between Department of Health and the City and County of, uh, Honolulu, nineteen beds. And again, Cedar Church is up next on the queue. We're gonna open it up probably the, the second or third week in June. And we have twenty-two beds for that. Um, in addition, we've got eight other beds in a pipeline to be opened before the end of the twenty twenty-four year. Um, so I'm here for any questions. I did hear the, uh, representatives from A C L U. We do agree that homelessness, um, many of our homeless, are, are people that are facing housing instability may have a, you know, and God bless them, but they may have a mental condition. Uh, some have a drug addiction and many of them also are duly diagnosed. They have both. Um, we are here to do these four things and please just let me, um, state them. We're gonna, we're focused on reducing homelessness, reducing crime, reducing recidivism and reducing taxpayer costs. We do this the right way and we get our, our people facing housing instability into a Kahale, into a shelter, into an apartment, into a safe zone. We're gonna help them and help the state move forward. Why? Because number one, we're gonna get them on Medicaid. Fifty pu, fifty-two percent of Medicaid is covered by the federal government. That's healthcare coverage. It's gonna help us out a lot. We're gonna get all of our, um, people that are in Kahale or shelters on SNAP, food stamps. How much is that? Four hundred forty-eight million dollars to the state, pure federal funds. Who would have thought homeless and low-income families can help the state's economy move forward? We're gonna get all of our people on SNAP. Third, the operator, we're asking all operators, all the contracts we're doing, we're asking every operator to see if that, that homeless person, if I'm the homeless guy, if I'm eligible for SSI or SSDI, Social Security Disability Benefits. If not, if I qualify for state general assistance. So the, the money from that could generate incomes from between four hundred to nine hundred dollars a month. Um, in our Kahale, and I know this sounds kinda harsh, but after a three to six month period, if the homeless person, if I'm the homeless guy and I'm working, they're gonna try to get me a job. Um, but even if I'm not working, if I'm getting SSI or general assistance, if I'm getting some source of income, be it five, six, eight hundred, nine hundred dollars a month, I'm gonna be asked to pay a three hundred dollar a month rent. Again, this all go to the economy and it's, it's connected to self-worth. Um, so at the end of the day, we're gonna reduce taxpayer costs. Eventually, if our Kahale are running really well, in about two years, we'd love to step off and let the Kahale, um, residents, we call them navigators, run that Kahale. That way the government can just step off and Kahale can be run, um, self-sufficiently. So, so that's my, um, I guess, you know, uh, my thoughts. I just wanted to share with you. The Cedar Church Kahale with Pastor Kim, uh, will be opening up next month, second or third week in June. And again, um, Chair Ibanez and committee members, I, I'm so grateful to be allowed to share with you, um, you know, this upcoming Kahale, what we're doing. And I'm here to answer any questions you may have about the Kahale or about homelessness. And again, um, we do understand that many people have suffered from trauma for homeless. We're just here to help. At the end of the day, if we can house our homeless, we can save a lot of money for the state. So, um, I'm here to take any questions.
Any questions from the board, Evelyn?
Hi, Evelyn Cullen. I have a quick question for you. So, um, how can I ensure that we are actually helping our residents before those that are coming off of the plane right away, being sent here from other areas, uh, from the continent? As well as, uh, we don't wanna have to hog all of the Kahales in one area. We'd love to share some on the east side of the, the island as well. And I can see this in a year or two, we'll have more Kahales than we do few simple owners. I mean, we're just gonna turn into a Kahale state. I, I can see that happening.
Yeah, that, that will probably never happen, I'll be honest. I mean, even for all the Kahale we're getting, you know, at the end of the day, it's about housing. If we don't have housing, we're gonna have homeless. Second, um, good question. I was the actual legislator that wrote that bill, Return to Home. We're putting in, um, thousands, hundreds of thousands of dollars to, if I'm the homeless guy from Kentucky or Florida or Mississippi and I come here, if we identify that person, if I'm identified, uh, we've got our nonprofits working with us to say, hey, hey, John, you wanna go back to Mississippi? We will send you back, but we do this with care. We connect the family in Mississippi and make sure they're willing to take John back. Once we get the approval and if they're able to pay for half my ticket, we send John back to Mississippi. We, in the past, and that's a good question, today that was brought up by the media. In the past two weeks, working with IHS and Connie Mitchell with our contract that we have with them, they have sent, just in the last two weeks, seventeen people from the mainland back to be reunited with their families on the mainland. Um, about people being sent, yes, I was the legislator that wrote to the, um, United States Attorney General. This was years ago and if you Google Rep. Mizuno fights SOTA, New York SOTA program for sending homeless to other states. I was able to stop that practice. My letter went to the US Attorney General and the President at the time. Once my letter was publicized, other governors and mayors jumped on board and were able to close that program down. That was a New York SOTA program. They were sending their homeless to Hawaii and other states. Um, is it still happening? I believe so. We're doing the best we can. Uh, Alaska is gonna send homeless to Hawaii. At the time I was, this is about eight months ago, I was still a legislator. I wrote to the mayor in Alaska not to do that. I said, if you use Hawaii's Return to Home program where you connect that homeless with a family, if someone's in, on Oahu or Lahaina with a family member willing to accept that homeless person, that'll work, but do not, do not just sweep your homeless to other states. And that mayor ended up not doing what he was gonna do. So I, I hope I was able to answer your question. As far as having too many Kahale, we, we don't have enough housing as it is. People are moving to the mainland. And, and by the way, these are small units. The end game is if I'm in a Kahale for two years and I'm able to get a job and save money, the goal for me is to move out to affordable housing or permanent support housing and open up another space. And, and regarding Kahale in geographic locations, this is a fact. This is a fact. People that are homeless do not move more than point seven miles away from where they're currently at. That is why we have a concentration of Kahale in the downtown and Evil A area and we're getting a number of Kahale up on the west side, Wainai, Nanakuli, Makaha. That, that is the way it is. I'm the expert, tell us that. Who, who are Governor, Mayor and myself to argue with that. We're putting the Kahale where the homeless are, but by the way, it should be in everybody's backyard. We're gonna prepare the states, that the state with Kahale to reduce our homeless and at the end of the day, save taxpayers' money. Again, Medicaid, SNAP, SSI, we're gonna get money into the economy and we're gonna reduce homelessness. Cause homeless people have a right to live a decent life, to get off the street. And by doing that, everyday citizens, the community members have a right to feel safe in their neighborhood. That has not, um, that has been a big problem with government. The mayor and the governor, myself and Sam Moku, we continue to go to neighborhood boards saying that we're gonna work to keep your community safe. Let's be honest. Let, let's, let's not sugarcoat. Every community out there, homelessness is a big issue and crime is a big issue. We're here to reduce both. Homelessness and reduce crime. That's what we're out to do. So that's, I'm, I'm able to answer any of the questions. Please understand, nothing but love, but, so go ahead and any other questions?
Any other questioners?
Chair, I have a question.
Go ahead, Zillian.
I'm sorry. Um, hi, Rep. Mizuno, aloha.
Hey, good to see ya.
Good to see you. Um, just a quick question. Did I hear you say one of the Kahale with the kupuna will be at Kamahameh, the Fourth Road, where the Korean, uh, Christian church is behind Jack in the Box? Is that?
Yeah, yeah, that's kinda, by.
Right, is that what?
Behind, behind. Yeah, that's, that's Pastor Kim's, yes.
Right, between the Korean, uh, the, the apartment complex and Jack in the Box. Is that what I?
Yes, yes, you're right.
Okay.
Behind Jack in the Box.
I just thought, I, I do, so I live one road over and, uh, I was arranged on Kamahameh, the Fourth Road. And my question to you is just, um, how are you coordinating services with HPD located on Kamahameh, the Fourth Road? If there is, uh, are altercations or other sorts of issues that arise, uh, from that particular Kahale? If there is, uh, are altercations or other sorts of issues that arise, uh, from that particular Kalahale?
Good question, Zilia. And I, and I remember back in the day when I go door to door, I go to your house, so I know where you live, my friend. I, I love working with you on foster, um, foster care youth, uh, policy. And anyways, yes, to answer your question, excellent question. The concern is, will crime go up? Um, are we coordinating with police? So, so here's the answer. Good question. We have twenty-four-seven security, even though the residents are kupuna, they're seniors, or they're coming out of the ER, they're medical respite clients, they're ones that might not be able to walk on their own. They're coming out of, um, acute care bed space at three thousand nine hundred dollars a night. But in a Kalahale, pennies on a dollar, we can house them under a hundred twenty bucks a night. So, yes, even though they're medically frail patients or kupuna seniors that are, would be, will be in this Kalahale, we're gonna have twenty-four-seven security. Um, in addition, we're gonna have twenty-four-seven case management services for that Kalahale. So, good question, um, but yes, w- we are, uh, definitely, um, there to also protect, uh, the communities. And, and so that, that's, that's what we've done at the other Kalahale to ensure, uh, safety. And, and knock on wood, um, we've been okay so far. But yes, we are gonna have twenty-four-seven security, twenty-four-seven case management services onsite.
Mahalo, appreciated. Just one, I'm sorry, one final quick comment about that. And it, it's also good to know that they have security because, again, uh, we are within that block of where unfortunately, um, there's a lot of crime and where recently the, the murder occurred, uh, a couple of weeks ago. And so it is also to protect the kupuna that are being housed there to just make sure it's safe for them and for, for everybody. And I do appreciate the efforts being made for our houses, particularly our kupuna, mahalo.
Zilia, thank you. And that, that area is a hotspot, KPT, and anyone that lives in Kalahi knows, KPT and Kalahi Valley Homes, there's a lot of fights. We get that, we know that. We're hopeful that with the twenty-four-seven security and twenty-four-seven case manager onsite, could be, um, quick to the draw at reporting any crime in the area. So not just for the Kalahale, but the surrounding area. So, good question. Thank you very much.
Any other questions from the board? Angela, one minute thirty?
Yes. Okay. So aloha.
Hey Angela, great to see ya.
Thank you. Um, so the Cedar Church, is that Jimmy Yamada's old church?
Uh, not certain. It's been Pastor Kim's for the past twenty years. Um, I've been fortunate enough to work with him for the past fifteen years. So I, I don't know, uh, who the previous pastor was.
I think it's Jimmy Yamada. He was the, um, I think owner of the A One Electric Company. So, um, I just have a question about homelessness. So, um, the government leaders across the country are prioritizing better police responses to people suffering from behavioral health crises, which include mental health or substance abuse crises, which, um, are exacerbated by the COVID-nineteen illness. And triage centers serve as a key component to improve police responses. And centers provide a treatment-focused option where first responders, including police and emergency medical services, can intake eligible persons experiencing mental health, behavioral health, and substance addictions, um, rather than arresting them. So.
Angela, you have twenty seconds.
Government provides institutional services such as SNAP, social security, and the church provides compassion. So, for example, maybe there are developmentally disabled homeless who have autism, who have heightened sense of smell. Um, while the church provides compassionate care, um, the government may provide disability assistance. That's a really good solution, right, to partner with the church?
Thank you, thank you. Yes, yes. Angela, uh, great question. Sorry, I, I don't wanna be too long, but, um, you're right. And you heard a person from ACLU, many of our homeless, um, will have a little bit of trauma. Uh, some will have a mental condition or a drug addiction or both. And so what we're trying to do is we're also providing triage service. So if I'm the homeless guy, it just so happens at two AM, making a lot of noise, instead of going to the, um, jail, we're going to the state hospital costing one thousand six hundred dollars a night, they may be able to find, um, me to temporarily stay at a Kalahale, maybe not Pastor Kim's, cause it's for kupuna and for the medically frail, but there may be middle-street Kalahale might be a good match. And then what they're gonna do is triage and get me into the right services I need. Maybe I do need to go to the state hospital, but if they can get me into a lower level care, um, because I have a mental condition or a drug addiction or both, they'll do that. We wanna save money for the state and get right, um, Kalahale for the person that needs that. So, good question. Um, and yes, looking forward to working with people that, um, suffer from a mental condition or addiction or both. Thank you.
Thank you. House of Green. Okay. Any questions, any other questions from the board?
Yes, I have a question.
Sure.
Um, aloha, aloha, ikuano. You said that there was a twelve perc- twelve percent increase in homelessness within the past four months or year?
Uh, from two thousand twenty-three to two thousand twenty-four, yes, sir. There, there was a twelve percent overall increase in homelessness. Yes, sir.
Is there anywhere we can find the statistics or demographics for those?
Ye- yes, sir. Y- you can. So if you Google point-in-time count, Oahu, you just wanna go Oahu. The, the neighbor islands, Kauai, Big Island, Maui, they'll come out with their count next week or next, next week. But Oahu is the first, um, first island, uh, to get theirs out. But if you were to Google, um, Oahu or, or Hawaii, point-in-time count, homelessness count, two thousand twenty-four, and if you want, you can compare it to two thousand twenty-three, uh, you'll get it on the internet. And you can go ahead and look through it. It talks about age, ethnicity, um, parts of the island. So the two big hotspots are west side, Wainai, Nanakuli, um, and Makaha. And the other hotspot, downtown Chinatown and Iwale. Those are the two hotspots. Um, but yes, you can easily find that information on the internet. Good question.
I have one more question as well. Does O triple C affect your, um, facts on the point seven miles of where you're building a Kalahale for like homelessness? Like after they get released from O triple C, or is that something else?
A good question, good question. Okay, so this is what I know. This is what I know, based on what, um, um, partners in care, IHS, Catholic tours have been telling both myself and the governor and the mayor. Generally, wherever the person considers his or her home, so just say I'm released from O triple C, but I chill out at, at, uh, Makaha, that's my, that's my spot. Uh, because I have family or friends, whatever it is, I consider that my, my home or the place I most usually stay at. Chances are, uh, as a homeless person, I'm gonna stay no more than point seven miles from Makaha. So, so coming out of prison, just because you're in prison doesn't mean you're gonna stay near the prison. But once you're released, wherever you consider your, your chill spot, your family spot, that's most likely gonna be where, where the homeless guy or gal will stay, or the homeless family will stay. Based on what, what the service providers and the experts tell us. But good question, good question.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
Just, just a quick one. This, um, this is to me like the, the state version of private providers who are, um, halfway houses. There's lots of them in Kalahi that, um, people don't know that their neighbors are providing those types of services. So that's just, I'm assuming that that's the way the state is gonna be addressing something that private sector is doing.
Not, well, good point, good, very good point. So I, I know what you're saying because when I was, um, in office, we would get some complaints about clean and sober homes. And are they really regulated? And, and is there, um, security there? And, and so, good, good point. I will say this. So for the Kalahale, it, it's Governor, myself, and the mayor, it, it's, we're, we're on a hook. We, we will do our best not to let any incident happen. Um, and that's why, you know, we have twenty-four-seven security and twenty-four-seven case management services. Um, but I don't wanna, um, belittle or pick on clean and sober homes. I'm just saying for our end, uh, we have to make, um, we have to be extra cautious and extra safe for these Kalahale because it is still new and we're rolling them out. And we wanna make sure, uh, there's no disruption or no violence to our community members. So, good point with the clean and sober homes, but for the Kalahale, yes, we have a little more, uh, sa- a number of safeguards. Thank you.
Okay, we have one more question, and then we're gonna move on.
So sorry, Tridaga. Um, is there a reason why they specifically chose behind Jack in the Box to have the Kalahales?
Uh, no, no. So Pastor Kim, i- if anyone that knows Pastor Kim, he, he works with the Hawaii Food Bank. They, they give out food, uh, just about every day, Monday through Friday. He's got a handful of homeless on his church anyways. I've, I know that because I've worked with him for fifteen years. We are partnering with a church that's allowing us to use free, without a dollar, their land. It's saving the state a lot of money. So if I'm the guy that would normally stay in a state hospital for one thousand six hundred dollars a night, guess what? I'm gonna be staying there for probably less than a hundred twenty dollars a night. Um, it's a golden opportunity. He's open to that. He's been asking that we put a Kalahale there. And so that's where, um, Mayor, Governor, myself, and Sam, we agreed to do that. And, and that's why we're working, um, on this Kalahale initiative for Pastor Kim's church, Cedar Church in Kalahi. The other one we're working with him on is Wainai. We're gonna put a hundred fifty units on his Wainai four-acre farm. Um, so it just so happens, he's been a great partner. Hope I answered your question.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you, um.
Chair, thank you. Thank you, board members. Appreciate ya.
Well, uh, hopefully in after our recess, you can come back and give some updates, right? If you can please do that.
Can do, yes.
All right. Thank you so much. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, board members. Appreciate ya.
Aloha.
Aloha.
Here, I'm gonna go back and see if there's anybody from HNT, Amazon, or HDOT online. Nobody, okay. So we're gonna move on to residents and community concerns, three minutes each. Oh, no, one minute, one and a half, sorry, one and a half.
Is it one and a half minutes? No. I have, I have one. I'll, I'll keep it short.
Okay, Eric.
All right, so you know, I, I, uh, you, you know, I wanted to revisit this. For those of you that were on the board last legislative session, I did go on kind of like a little diatribe against this bill that Representative Gannon had rep- had introduced. And I think it's a good time to revisit it because what that bill originally, how he originally drafted, his original intent was to prohibit the police from arresting people who committed many, many, many crimes, even up to felonies. So if they broke into your house, they didn't hit ya, they wouldn't be arrested. Um, all of these different things. And so why I think this is important? Because it also includes somebody who throws a brick through the window. And if that would have happened, if that bill had been passed as Representative Gannon had originally intended, that person would not have been arrested. He would have gotten a ticket. So every one of you would have had to walk out of that door right in front of him. That is not appropriate. And let me read you the reasoning, and this is what I wanna leave y'all with, is the reason he says this is why it's important is that arrests to the victimizers, this is, I'm adding victimizers. So arrests are highly disruptive to a person's life. And arrests can be a cause of embarrassment and can cause trauma to the person being arrested. So my problem with this and something we need to keep in mind as these people are trying to pass laws is we cannot prioritize a victimizer's trauma or a victimizer's embarrassment or a victimizer's disruption to his life when the victims have to bear those burdens. The victims aren't traumatized? Okay. And that's my issue. Just remember that going forward in legislative session.
Thank you so much.
Hey, I'm gonna check in right now. This is Sonny Ganon in here, the representative. Hi, um, I can wait until I, it's my time to discuss, but, you know, I sit on the Judiciary Committee, so I can, yeah, I can articulate the discussion there.
Am I chair? Yeah, I'm chair. So I'm gonna decide what people are gonna say something. This is community concern, so we're gonna wait Sonny, okay? Can I respond? Are you raising your hand?
But I don't want it to, uh, go into my.
It's gonna take up your time.
You have a minute thirty.
Any other community concerns?
I have a community concern. Okay.
Oh, okay.
Okay. So I'm gonna share my screen. Um, so, um, I teach children, so that's why I usually wear a, uh, costume. So if any of you are offended by it, I'm explaining it, um, in a direct way. Um, because I've heard that that was an issue, although it was never brought up to me. So I teach children and, um, you know, it helps with processing their emotions and frustrations. Um, so, for example, we've been going over this, um, Hawaii Children and Youth, um, agenda from CARES, uh, my grassroots movement. And, um, so working with children is very fun. We get to learn about, uh, you know, being respectful to living creatures, animal welfare, and then bullying. Um, and we got a resolution adopted, um, and created, um, arts at the Capital Modern Museum. This, uh, really helps the students process their emotions so that they don't end up causing chaos in the, uh, classroom. And when we ask something out, um, they get an opportunity to really express themselves. Um, so I hope that this helps you all. And I have a Neighborhood Security Walk Resolution. If you'd like to read it, um, we have a variety of efforts. So if that's something the chair thinks is appropriate.
We can't.
Yeah, we can't take action.
It's not on the agenda.
Do you wanna read it?
Sorry. It's open for discussion?
No, it's not.
No, it's.
It's not on the agenda, so we're not gonna discuss it. You have to submit it prior. We're on recess for next month, explanation. Give it to the office earlier than that.
That's how it works. Sure.
Any other questions? Community concerns?
Community concerns.
I have a community concern as a community member. Um, wearing costumes are one thing, but wearing something that represents an authority in our state like you have right now, the sheriff's badge, that's illegal to wear. You can't wear that.
Yeah.
Um, I can talk to you about this later because I was given this from the sheriff's team.
My son.
Yeah, that is not allowed.
That's not allowed.
That's misrepresentation. You need to take that off immediately, like right now.
Okay, I would take it off out of respect and to not get into a fight with you all, but this is not illegal.
Yeah, that's true. Thank you for bringing that up, man.
Where I'm coming with that is because my son has badges. He's a police officer. And I said, I'm gonna put it on my, my, my jacket, mom, you can't do that because you're gonna be representing HPD. So I'm just giving that to you. You can put it on the wall, but you can never ever put it on your person.
Yes. Thank you for, thank you for bringing that to the.
Public safety.
I'll have a check for that.
Yes.
Just remove it.
Yeah.
No, I took it. Yeah. I said out of respect, I will remove it. I don't think that's correct.
That's fine. Any other community concerns? Anybody online, community concerns? Sorry?
Community concerns?
Oh.
We're all community concerns.
Yeah, I would just like to speak on a few things.
Sure.
Um, I was hoping that there would be more, um, involvement, I guess, for, there's been a lot of like illegal dumping and abandoned vehicles on Awaki Street, on the Ma'atai side of the limit, and on Diddy Street. Um, so I'd just like to bring that to everyone's attention, if someone could take care of that. Or even send out like a notice to the community that, that people in the area would love to partake in that.
Anybody else? Anybody online? No?
Just a quick, um, uh, yeah, I just wanna thank everyone for, for the patience, uh, the past two months. I know it's been quite, quite a journey, um, with everything we've been through. But I wanna thank everyone for, uh, being here, uh, today with us. And those that are not right now, uh, I hope they can come back to the community and something. And, uh, I do hope that we find, uh, healthy coping strategies in how we're dealing with, uh, the process, the trauma that we just experienced the past few months. Um, my, some of the things that I've been doing is meditation. I've been going to therapy. I mean, I've been going to therapy a long time, but, you know, it has been quite helpful and just trying to take a more, uh, metacognitive. So I hope that everyone does the same or, um, finds a way to put the strategies that we're self-talking.
Thank you so much for that. Uh, I'm gonna move on to the next, um, let's see, US Army Garrison, Hawaii Military Report, Selena Jackson-Mosley. She's on my. Oh, hi.
Thank you.
This Friday.
Thanks for being here.
Aloha, Chair. Very much appreciate the board. Thank you for having me. Um, I was invited by Chair Ibanez, uh, when we had our Garrison Get Together, our, our community engagement with the Garrison Commander. So I'm here to, um, present our community announcement. Generally, they, they focus in on the area where we learned vocal barracks are, but some of the other announcements like touching to, um, everybody else. So my first announcement is, um, we always announce our job fairs. Um, we have a job fair every month. Our next hiring fair is May twenty-first. And that'll be at Eliamato Military Reservation Gym. It's open to everybody. It goes from eight-thirty to two PM. Um, there's on-the-spot hiring and provisioning, uh, provisional hiring. Um, all you need is two references, group ID, social security card. two references, group of ID, social security card, um and there's resumes there and applications that you can do. Uh, if you're interested in working with the youth, so they have openings in the child youth services, which is um, they offer lots of benefits in that particular area. Um, you have access to all of the recreation facilities, discounted childcare if you have a child, training and commissary and um commissary and PX privileges. So it's a pretty good deal because not everybody who works with the government has commissary or PX privileges, which is crazy. Um, then the next announcement is training, like so we do a monthly advisory training for all the trainings going on. It's mostly responsible villain we were, but um if you're interested, I send that training to Cherry Bondes. Um, then we have a special training going on with, it's a, a type of exercise. That'll be between the days of the seventeenth and the twentieth. This next announcement is actually very important. Um, so this is in regards to the draft EIS for land retention here on Oahu. So if any of you are familiar, the PTA um draft just came out. So um, I believe the comment period is still going on for that, so you can submit still public comments, but this is in regards to Oahu. So in it, and I'm just gonna read it because I'm not a person.
Sure.
So in accordance with the National Environmental Policy Act and Hawaii Environmental Policy Act, the Army's to frame a draft environmental, environmental impact statement, or EIS, for army training land retention of state lands at Kahuku Training Area, Ko'omohu Training Area, and the Makua Military Reservation. The Army proposes to retain up to six thousand three hundred and twenty-two acres of state land at PTA, Ko'omohu, and MMR to support continued military training. The proposed action is an administrative action that does not include construction, modernization, or changes in ongoing training. The draft EIS assesses the environmental impacts of the proposed action and the no-action alternative. The draft EIS is scheduled to be published in the coming months for a sixty-day public review period. And the public may submit comments during the public review period in writing or in person at the public meetings that will be held in three different locations on Oahu. The more details will be published as we know when that EIS is published. If you have any questions in regards to that, I can um, I can say it out loud, the email, or Cherry Bondes has it.
Okay, sure. Yeah.
Or you can call the number that's.
Yeah, just email me a little forward it to.
Okay, sure. And that's it.
Any questions from the board? Any questions online? Thank you so much. I'll be in correspondence with you.
So you brought up, I'm sorry, I don't, I don't mean to take too much time, but you brought up the abandoned vehicles and you were saying that a lot of them are military vehicles? What were those streets again? Cause I didn't quite catch it.
Oh, I'm not so sure, I said military vehicles. But um Livi Street and Awiki Streets.
Where's abandoned vehicles?
Abandoned vehicles and like a lot of illegal dumping.
Livi Street, um.
Awiki, AU, IPI.
Yep. So if anybody sees any abandoned vehicles that you suspect could be the military, abandoning the vehicles, cause that has happened in the past.
Yeah.
Has happened. Um, let us know and we can figure that. Okay, thank you so much.
The training advisory um report is also on the Google Drive.
Uh, good evening, board, um board members. Um, Glenna for the Office of Senator Carl Rhodes. Um, I submitted my report to you folks and I'm, I'm just gonna stand on my report. Um, nothing really important to point out. Um, so I'm just gonna field any questions you folks might have for Senator Rhodes.
Any questions from the board to Rhodes?
I'm just wondering how the crime is going in downtown and if there are any safety action plans with Citizens Patrol, Neighborhood Security Walk.
Is that HPD? Yes, HPD. Very accurate. Any other questions? Anything online? Okay, thank you so much. We're gonna move on. Um, Senator.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone.
Hello, Senator.
Hope you can hear me.
Yes.
Yeah.
So as you all know, the legislature ended on May third, we signed a die, and now the governor has all the bills. A little over two hundred bills in front of him, either for his signature or for his veto, or if a better bill become law without his signature. And he has until June twenty-fifth to inform the legislature whether he intends to veto any bills and the legislature, if they decide to.
Sorry, Senator, Senator, um you're, something with your landline, it keeps on cutting in and out.
Okay.
This is.
Testing, one, two, three, four.
Now we can hear you. That's good.
Okay. So if the legislature would like to deploy any of these bills, we need to do it by July, on July tenth.
July tenth.
I submitted my report, so I'm sure I have it. I have a list of all the measures. I'm sure it's been in the newspaper as well. So I'm not gonna go over the bills. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer. In the interest of time, I think the meeting is running late. Um, I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions from the board, Angela?
Aloha, um Senator Kim, I was wondering, um since there are bills for feral chickens and biosecurity, if feral cats and trap and neutering is gonna be considered as well?
Well, the money that was put into the biosecurity bill, it says feral animals. And so that could cover that as well. So it's really up to the department at this to determine how they would like to use that funding. Their monies, monies for the counties, but they have to match it um fifty fifty, eight hundred percent match it. And so the, um, want to augment the services that the city already has instead of trying to recreate a new state.
Thank you for your response.
Any other further questions from the board? Good remark.
Hi, Senator Kim, board member Shirley Temple here. Just wanted to say thank you for the meeting last night regarding the coconut nice renas, or spito. It was well attended and very informative, so just wanted to say thank you.
It was, yes. So thank you for that. I, I didn't realize that we would have that many people that are concerned and interested. So I'm really pleased for the turnout and that the concern that our residents have about invasive species and especially the renas, spitos. Thank you.
Any other questions? No, thank you so much, Senator. Stay safe, stay dry.
Thank you. You too.
Okay, okay, bye bye. Uh, Senator Blaine McKay, or Representative? Moving along, Representative Daniel Holt? Representative Sonny Gannier?
Uh, good afternoon, board. Um, apologies that I can't be with you, you know, you're doing so hot. Um, I submitted to um Mr. Pintor, the last mailer, sent that to the community. Um, discussing some of the work that we've been working on out of the House, mainly having to do with reaction to the line of fire. Um, if you've been watching the news, there's been a few bills that came out of that. One of the biggest ones is HB three two oh two regarding uh new affordable housing. Um, it's in the mailer. I don't wanna get too into it, but it basically allows the counties to articulate um accessory dwelling units. So hopefully it will um create more housing throughout the state. Um, HB nineteen seventy-four is a long overdue increase for care home workers, pretty significant to Kalihii because of um a large number of human beings that do that work. Um, also in the mailer is information about how taxes are lowering statewide over the next several years. Uh, we did fix the base budget for the University of Hawaii and the Department of Education, which are gonna be fully funded this year as they have been in the last several years. The Office of Enterprise Technology is currently getting on board their CIP dashboard. There was a question about that at the meeting two months ago. Um, but as a heads up, um, the CIPs that our office and um Senator Kim and Senator Kai put in two years ago are moving forward. That includes Fern Playground, the Bridge at Kiliwaina, um across Kalihii Stream, the Kalihii Kai Parking Lot, um and the Gym at Barrington. Um, after the shooting that happened at B Building two weeks ago, I had a pretty constructive meeting with Kukulei Valley, um parents and children together and the folks who work at Housing. And we've got some concerns. Um, it's actually been a pretty good year. Crime has not really spiked up until this event, this tragedy. Uh, so just trying to make sure that we uh keep young people in summer programming. So um making sure that we work with Michaels, which is the company that oversees Kukulei Valley, I mean, Kugio Park Terrace in Insurance Security. Um, let's see, I did wanna reference just briefly, um, board member Irwin's discussion of HB thirteen thirty-six. So um my experience as a trial attorney since two thousand eight and my role on the Judiciary Committee has sent me to a lot of different places. So the National Coalition of State Legislators and MacArthur Foundation worked with me to develop a series of bills. One of those was last year's HB thirteen thirty-six. It was a big bill. It had a lot to do with the way we handle pre-trial assessments of individuals who are charged with crimes. We just heard earlier from the ACLU about how there's big ships and the way we're dealing with crime stuff. Uh, the discussion about citations in lieu of arrest is ongoing. Um, I was actually surprised last year to hear the support from the Chief of Police from Honolulu saying that he supports uh giving people citations, essentially tickets for people who are given petty misdemeanors. Um, so this is gonna be an ongoing thing. In many states, they're already doing this, uh Washington DC, Washington State, a lot of the southern states as a result of the conversations resulting from Black Lives Matter and George Floyd. So we're still talking about this. We're still talking about whether or not um officers should be given discretion or should be told essentially to be given citation, be given individual citations. Uh, data is still coming out. We're working with the judiciary as well as various chiefs to try to figure this out, and then the Judiciary Committee. So it's kind of an ongoing process. Um, and hoping you folks can come in and testify next year. That's all for now.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
Yeah, no, I mean, I, I just think the question, I mean, it's great that you uh highlighted the citations and the, and the support from the Chief of Police. I don't disagree with that. If citations in lieu of some, but you mentioned misdemeanors. Your um, your law didn't go into that. Your original draft, and anyone can look at it online, was prohibiting arrests for a lot of these things. And that was your original intent. It's in there. It's all online for anyone to read. You can read the opposition. It's great. I mean, citations in lieu of some misdemeanors makes sense, but that isn't how you drafted it originally, right? And you know, it, it's, it's misleading. You can highlight the one part that you had support for, but not the part that most people oppose. I mean, it's, it's chaos. I mean, you can't forget the victims and, and then treat the victimizers as if it's some sort of special thing. I mean, it's insane. We live in a community where there's a lot of crime, there's a lot of theft, and it's, you represent this community. And I think that you should care about the community and the concerns of the community in that way. You can't be letting people go. As an option, yes, I agree, but that is not at all how you drafted it, and anyone here can go online and look at it. Anyone.
Yeah, I think about the community. Tell it to me.
I do, and, and I, and I hope that you check out HB thirteen thirty-six and the way that we amended it. Oftentimes you draft things and you get into committee and you realize that was really terribly written, and you fix it. And that's part of the democratic process. And I was happy to rewrite it. It came back this year as an entirely different bill with an entirely different introducer under HB sixteen oh one. Um, many of the things that we did with having to do with pre-trial, we're actually doing with Kahalas now, so we're moving people out of pre-trial incarceration and into assessments and risk assessments. This is all kind of part of the same conversation. And you know, like balancing people's individual liberties against the safety of the community. It's like, these are rough conversations, and at no point would I, you know, like introduce intentionally a terrible bill that would put forward, put forward like somebody's ability to commit crime. Like that's just not how it works. I, I swore an oath to uphold the Constitution both as a lawyer and a legislator. Um, so it's like, I, I'm trying to not get too wound up about this, but like, absolutely, um just check it out. Um, the ACLU, and I'm just jumping in the chat. Um, we had a really long conversation about this last year and this year. And you know, I think we're gonna keep talking about it. Um, and we're getting better data and better assessments for how to work with the justice system. This also matters for Kalihii as we reassess pre-trial preparation regarding the future of the Oahu Community Correction Center right there in Dillon.
Any other questions from the board?
Hi, Rep. Canada, and Board Member Shirley Temple here. At our last meeting, um, we had requested for the last funding for the DOE CIP projects within our district. Wanting to follow up on that again.
Yeah, I just mentioned the Office of Enterprise Technology is getting their CFE dashboard up and going. Uh, thus far, it's in the budget bill, so it's like you just, I'm sorry, I didn't pull it up. But it's gonna be on both the dashboard, which is coming online, and in the budget bill. Uh, but you know, we work pretty hard to, you know, it's not just me, it's also the senators and other community members that are really hoping to ensure that our continuing CIP budget is met. And as I mentioned, it's the projects that are still moving forward that we put in two years ago.
I guess I'm.
The important thing is that the DOE and the UH budget has been fully funded.
I guess um the request was um having a list of the different CIP items that were last. So.
That, nothing last.
I'm proposing that request again.
Nothing last.
I'm talking about the four hundred sixty-five million uh DOE funds for school construction projects.
Yeah, so if you look at, it would be now.
There was a bunch of schools that had last.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying. So this has been in the news a lot, so the.
Yes. It's very important that we understand and see a list of what had, um.
Yeah, yeah, what I'm telling you is um, the DOE just hired Randy Moore to replace Kurt Otoguro. Um, so they are coming up with this list as well. So it, like it's, we just know that our CIPs that were put in two years ago have been granted.
I'm still confused.
And I can follow up, if you, if you'd like a specific list, then of course I can follow up specific to the board.
So this for the schools within our district. Follow us.
Can I just get that bill number that he referenced again?
Sonny, was it sixteen oh one, the new bill that replaced thirteen thirty-six? Is that correct?
And where did that end up?
Yeah, that was, so we, so we actually scrapped that one as well.
Okay, so where are we at? We had HB thirteen thirty-six that got scrapped. Now is it HB sixteen oh one? Is that the new one?
That was one of the ones having to do with citations in lieu of arrest. And then we amended it to just deal with petty misdemeanors.
Any other questions from the board, Angela?
Okay, if you want to turn around.
Yeah.
Uh, aloha, Representative Canada. I really liked the E and D Strategy um Safety Initiative Bill resolution, which is very similar to Neighborhood Security Walk. Um, it encourages social life, reduces fear, and stops uh people from withdrawals from community life because they get anxious. Um, and things just still operate very smoothly after that. So um the goal is always to activate fun activity, get trained for emergency team response and law enforcement strategies. And while I didn't agree entirely with the proposal, I do agree with the goal, which is to fight, to fight, to push for safety. So um, you know, as a representative of our district, and since I'm a volunteer safety coordinator for our Kapalama Neighborhood Security Walk, um, if it's okay, I can tell you something about it. I don't wanna go on for too long on a public platform where discussions can get heated, where it can be two people challenging one person. I think that's very inappropriate. Um, we're, um, we have to keep to order and decorum, which is from the Neighborhood Board Plan. Decorum is kind of hidden in good taste and polite community here. So if you'd like to um get an email from. So if you'd like to get an email from me about Weed and Seed and Neighborhood Security Walk and public safety initiatives, is that okay?
Yes, me?
Yeah.
Yeah. Angela, you can email me anytime. All right, I'm just going to respond to the chat. HB 1800 records in the state budget, it has the CIP projects that Ms. Templow is asking about. So you can look that up. Ms. Spencer Chine is asking about adult friends for youth. I'm sorry, we just kind of had an emergency meeting with the care providers after the shooting to kind of check in about youth programs, make sure that everything was okay. And, yeah, that's what I got there.
Okay, I would see how you. Evelyn?
Just a real quick one in regards to Weed and Seed. Please include areas beyond the Mid-Highway, all the way to Sand Island. We've always outside of it, and we always end up inheriting all of the people outside of the Weed and Seed. So please protect us. Thank you.
Oh, okay. During a hearing this year, like, I actually learned a lot about Weed and Seed. I didn't realize that after it was a program that was started nationally almost 30 years ago, it has become kind of a local homegrown thing. So Weed and Seed is now a local 501(c)(3) that is pretty active in some communities. And it's expanding in places like Chinatown, Naua Pahu. And I think that, you know, this board or us, we want to work with them, we probably should. It's historically a program run by prosecutors, but now it's been kind of run by a nonprofit, differentiated from the way it was created and from other states.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? From the community?
Hearing none, thank you so much, Sunny. Stay safe. Bring on the Governor Josh Green, Representative Fisher. City elected, no, okay, city elected officials. Mayor Rick Blanchard is representative. Steven?
Are we okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. Good evening, Board Members of the Kalahi, I'm the Neighborhood Board Number 15. My name is Stephen Courtney, Deputy Director for the Department of Information Technology and the Mayor's Representative. Let me start with highlights from the mayor's newsletter. It includes information about an update on major improvements and the Department of Planning Permitting, details on the city's annual sustainability report, which was published on Earth, removal of the high school stairs officially gets underway, and May is wildfire awareness month. Summer Fund, the Department of Parks and Recreation is still looking for plenty of staff. These jobs are an excellent way to gain experience in the childcare field while earning a minimum of $16 per hour. Other announcements, meet your city officials. Mayor Blanchard and his team will be on the road to visit communities around Awahui. There are still four more town hall meetings left. So a late for Memorial Day. The Department of Parks and Recreation is requesting your help to meet our goal of gathering 38,000.
Let go, that's too combative.
The graves of the National Memorial of the Pacific at Punch Head. It's part of our Memorial Day service Monday, May 27.
Sunny, ready to tell you?
Most of the main making of the activities are on Friday, May 24. Department of Law Issues, more concerns. City Career Program. Board Member Irwin requested information on career programs linked to community colleges, including the Poa Kello Fellows Internship Program. The Poa Kello Fellows Internship Program provides college students with education and specialized requirements that they can gain experience in the government sector applicable to their field of study such as engineering, accounting, and political science. The education requirement is following. Successful completion means two years of post-secondary education, which leads to an undergraduate degree. Two, current enrollment in an accredited post-secondary educational institution on at least a halftime basis or intend to register in the next regular semester. Opportunities for students in community colleges may be available in limited departments, families dependent, funded. The Department of Parks and Recreation Summer Higher Program is one such opportunity. Each year, the Summer Fund Program employs roughly 500 adults to help develop the program, supervise Kiki, and put the fund into Summer Fund. In regards to the property tax, Board Member Cullen noted that the property tax rates were converted to commercial tax rates. Board Member Cullen inquired about the turnaround time for a city that will allow citizens time to catch up or not switch it to commercial rate. Board Member Cullen's inquiry appears to pertain to instances where property transitions from residential to commercial classification resulted in a higher tax rate. Such changes typically occur when owners of properties within specified non-residential districts or dividends dedicate the property for residential use, then lose that dedication. There are two common scenarios leading to this. One, property sale or transfer, or two, cessation of exclusive residential. In regards to Bus Route Number 1, Board Member R requested Route 1L to stop at bus stop number 987 on Leeha Street and King Street. Currently, Bus Route 1L bypasses that particular bus stop. If Bus Route 1 has any problems, we'll cause a backup and service along that route. The Bus Route 1L divides riders with faster travel times by skipping bus routes. Current number of Route 1L bus stops is at a maximum capacity to facilitate faster service. Therefore, in order to add to Route 1L bus stop, it must replace a distant Route 1L stop. DTS will evaluate this request for consideration and report back to the board at its June meeting. In regards to city arts projects, Board Member Young asked which city art projects are scheduled. Information about current exhibits and upcoming events can be found on Moka's website. I've placed applicable website links in the chat. Are there any questions?
Any questions from the board? Any questions online?
Actually, I have a question.
Any questions online?
I have a question first. Steven, which is a comment.
Yes.
I think you and I were supposed to correspond. I'm going to continue to correspond with you via email. I won't take up everybody's time because that sounds suspicious to you.
Like, yes.
Okay, I'll just continue my conversation with you offline. Angela?
So the next town hall is going to be this week. Is that going to be at the North Shore Haleiva, where there is a proposal for the Sharks Cove Alliance to build an ocean safety first responders urgent care center?
Yes, it will be the next town, actually tomorrow night at 7:00 PM. And I believe that is, that is one of the issues that we will be prepared to answer.
Okay, I'll go there. Thank you.
Hearing no further questions. Thank you so much, Steven, stay safe. Thank you for all the-
Yeah, thank you.
Did anyone have any questions? Anybody online? Okay, thank you so much, Steven. Can I move on to ready and go?
Hi, good evening, can you guys hear me? Okay. Where is it? Come on. Okay, hi, hi. Good evening. This is Tricia Raifel from Alfa Rara Radiant Cordero's office. And I've shared the link in the chat for her report this month. And I'll attempt to share my screen, see if that's- Let's see if it will share. Here we go. Can y'all see that? Hopefully you can. But, oh, you cannot. I'll just, well, you do have the link in the chat, so feel free to open it up. And I'll just highlight some of the things in the interest of time.
Just highlight this one in the interest of time, so that keeps things more streamlined. Just pick one, if anything.
Oh, okay. Well, that's going to be hard, I guess. I will highlight that the community update on the first, like, on the first page. So we want a Mahalo DPR for repaving those two parking lots at Kalakaua District Park. DPR is currently working on resurfacing the ports, and this is anticipated to be finished by the end of June. If you have any questions, please feel free to reach out and let us know, how we can help.
Okay, perfect. Any questions from the board?
Hi, Tricia, Board Member Shirley Temple here. At the last meeting-
Hi.
Hi. At the last meeting, I had requested measures on how Councilmember Cordero could address abandoned vehicles and commercial vehicles illegally parked in the Kalahi Kai area. I know the administration deals with executing, you know, the actual vehicles, but in terms of legislation, is there something that she can propose to address these concerns?
We can communicate. I cannot, I'm not prepared to answer that right now. So I can definitely get back to you if you want to share your email or email us or call us. Otherwise, I'll find that email. Thank you.
Aloha, Councilmember's office. I was wondering about the riding the bicycles activity. That is a good exercise, an effective activity to take out frustrations properly. Physical activity during exercise. Do you see good results with the kids when you ride bicycles with them?
Oh, you're referring to the event that was called the Kalahi Akoala Ride?
Yeah.
Yeah, that was a good event. There are a lot of, that was a big turnout. We were actually handing out snacks and refreshments and having the bathrooms available for use at the park for the riders. So we didn't actually ride this year. Maybe next year.
We're going to move along with the Councilmember Tyler's.
Aloha, Chair. Aloha, Board Members. Can everyone hear me okay? Yes. Is it just me? Can everyone else hear that static in the audio? I think maybe it's just our online. Just so that you can let, give them back your helpers at Kapalama Hala. I will be, I will be very brief. I put the link to Councilmember Miss Sutter in the chat. You can find all of her information about it. We did have a- We did have a successful- Can you hear me okay? We had a successful coconut rite master's beetle meeting last night. The coconut rite beetle team. Yeah, so that will be detailed in all, if you need more information, that'll be in the next month's newsletter. And you can find that in all the newsletters or found online where that link is. Just lastly, we had requested to get four faded crosswalks and street signs to be painted on North School Street. So DTS did respond to say our second section of painted crosswalk markings. As an interim measure, we will stop here for pedestrian signs to enhance the crosswalk area. We will issue a work order to DFM to reference a paint and sign order and to replace faded signs, install these signs, and replace faded pavement markings. There's a future complete streets project that's coming to North School Street that'll further improve the pedestrian crossing at Home Cave Street with the installation of regular rapid flashing beacons. So this has been an ongoing thing, and they have held a distance for their delay response. I'll leave it at that if anyone has any questions.
I, for Aloha, I think that is in your purview area of responsibility. Aloha, I am interested in having that to be further researched for that to be recognized as official historical. It is significant, and I believe it should have that exhibition. So if there can be some research, it can be done for Aloha Park in Kalahi.
I am so happy to help with that, but having such a hard time hearing you. Do you mind emailing me? I will put my contact information in chat.
Sure.
Yeah, apologies. But please reach out. Happy to help.
Angela?
Aloha, Councilmember Tyler's office. Wow, I see a lot of, like, activity from schools, like, one in Akoala, and also my A. I went to that school. So I was just wondering if that's been a case. So you work with this team, and you let this team kind of solve through the agenda support to kind of like block out whatever.
Angela, again, apologies, but I can barely hear because it's breaking up. But can you call me at the office and we'll talk offline? Okay, great. My number's going in the chat, too.
Thank you so much. Have a good evening, stay safe.
Yeah, sorry about that. Aloha.
So we're going to move on to community resources and educational institutions. We have no community reports.
Oh, I have one. So Deosa had to be really like, um, sorry. Okay, basically, she's saying that she's trying to get all of the public education, all the public education schools here from this meeting. So she's getting proposals from, like, Barrington and Kalahi and the other ones. So she's getting, she's bringing them all, at least trying to get a meeting with them, and also trying to get them to the next university law. So, uh, we talked with Deosa, can we just send you that?